Well, it's to. Roll call. Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson is absent for the moment. Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Jerem. And Mr. President is absent for the entire meeting.
Please rise for the Pledge Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
(inaudible). 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 (inaudible).
Well, it's been Gray's turn to do the invocation, so if this turns into a joint invocation, then so be it. And I saw a priest up here, and I thought I could put him on the spot if we needed to, but we'll handle it from here today. I would just like to ask you to reflect upon the, what's been reported in the newspaper lately, Vietnam veterans and their service to our country. I was with three last night, two who served in country, one in Thailand. And they're, interestingly, their perspective is what's been going on is that many of their friends with exposure to Agent Orange was weighing heavily on their minds. So that is, including the friend of mine who served in Thailand, he often wondered back then why it was where the communications towers were, why there was no foliage. And that was in Thailand, and that they now know was this defoliant in Agent Orange. So they all have this fear of this silent agent within them that has taken so many of their friends. So I ask you to think about them, and particularly those of family members now as they learn generationally, there may be the effects of Agent Orange being passed along. So if anyone else would like to add anything? I know Councilmember Milton, you participated last night, if you'd like to share something.
It was just a wonderful event. You know, it just showed how much our, our community cares about our veterans, not our vet, not only just our veterans from Vietnam, but the Korean War. There was actually a World War II veteran I know that was on that plane. There were a number of Iraqi and Afghanistan vets that showed up at the airport. I believe the total was about 5,000. It was just an amazing event to see the support of our community who took the time, and I mean hours, people were down there at seven. We were there till midnight welcoming the veterans back home in the welcome that they, they actually deserved the first time, but I'm glad they were able to get it this time. But it actually spoke to our, our entire community. It made me feel very good about living in a community that we respect our veterans so much. So, thank you.
Counselor.
Yeah, I'd like to, and I'd like to extend it beyond just one or two nights, because I did have a lot of friends who did serve over Vietnam, and they, they are suffering today from this. And I'm a associate member of the Millard VFW, and I go there on a regular basis. And as I go to the number of VFWs around, I do not see a lot of people know we can go or you can go as a guest. And I think if you look at some of these VFWs, they are actually, do need people just to come in, and like they have the spaghetti works on, on the one that's on 32nd all the time. So I just encourage us to do that, because that in itself will help this, this organization that is for these men and women who've done quite a few things to allow us to do what we're doing today. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you.
City Clerk, serve as publication of data or official newspaper on June 3, 2016. Notice for council and regular city council meeting June 7. Current copy of meetings acts post and white binder on the East Wall Legislative Chamber.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to your city, Omaha City Council. We thank you for joining us here today. As a courtesy to those in attendance, we ask you to please silence your cell phones at this time. Before we begin with our agenda, Mr. Festerson would like to welcome Mr. Landau and some special guests today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I did just want to recognize Professor Paul Landau from UNO, a political science professor and also a former chief of staff to a mayor here in Omaha, who is here with a class of about 20 or 30 students here to learn about local government. I had a chance to speak with them just before the meeting. They asked a lot of great questions and talked to staff members as well. They're representing today Northwest High School, Central High School, Burke High School, North High School, and South High School.
Go Packers!
Yeah, I think Councilman Gurnat might have something to say about your soccer team here in a minute, but I wanted to welcome you to our city council meeting and give you a chance to wait for the cameras. So wait for the cameras so you can watch tonight.[314.12][314.12](laughing) Thanks for being here. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Gurnat. Okay, he waves off. Mr. Clerk.
Zoning ordinance on final ring and planning board attachments will take items five through eight as one case. Five, ordinance to approve a planned unit redevelopment overlay district in an R6 low-density multifamily residential district located northwest of 31st and Mason Streets to approve the development plan. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Six is resolution that the preliminary plat entitled 31 Mason West with a waiver of lot depth along with attached conditions is hereby accepted. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. And seven is the replat transmitted here with entitled 31 Mason West is hereby approved. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. And eight is a subdivision agreement is hereby approved.
The public hearing on items numbered five through eight begins at this time. Are there anyone wishing to speak as a proponent in favor of these items? Come forward, state your name and address. Seeing none any opponents, public hearing is closed.
Motion approved.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Five through eight are passed six to zero. Nine through 12 is one case. Nine is ordinance to approve a planned unit redevelopment overlay district in an R7 medium-density multifamily residential district located at 1113 South 31st Street to approve the development plan. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. 10 is resolution of the preliminary plat entitled 31 Pacific with a waiver of lot depth along with attached conditions hereby accepted. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. 11 is the replat transmitted here with entitled 31 Pacific is hereby approved. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. And 12 is a subdivision agreement is hereby approved.
The public hearing on items numbered nine through 12 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Please come forward, identify yourself by name and address, and slide to your right so you can use the mic.
There we are. Thank you. Right here.
Yes.
All right. My name is Dennis McCully. I live at 3017 Pacific Street. Now, no one get concerned, I'm not going to go through all this. I'm going to enter these exhibits if I may.
If you have items you'd like incorporated in the record, please hand them to the city clerk's representatives to your left.
Can I briefly go through these?
Of course.
And then I'm going to do this very, very quickly.
Yes, you've got three minutes.
All right. My exhibits basically support my contention that I am going to, once again, as I did on the 30th and Pacific property, object, because I don't see enough parking spaces once again. In addition, you'll see and hear in my exhibits, and I'm not going to name them by such, but I do have some specific case law regarding my specific house, which is in the story counts. And there's some interesting historic law regarding property that's within the view of my property. I don't think anybody else has that standing here, but I do have that standing. And within my exhibits, I've got all information. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Gurnat.
I do object. Oops, sorry.
Thank you for sharing your opposition. Mr. Fanslaw, would you like to take us through the department's position on the parking? And was, is that already addressed by the zoning board of appeals, or is that a part of the ZBA, excuse me, the planned unit redevelopment, or both?
Dave Fanslaw, City Planning. It was not part of the ZBA process, it's part of the PUR process.
Does the parking meet with current Planning Department policy with regard to ratio of parking stalls per units for infill development?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anything else you'd like to add?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
What's the will of the council?
Motion approved. Second.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Nine through 12 are passed six to zero. Pursuant city council rule 70, agenda items number 13 through 18 should be laid over two weeks for publication in public hearing. Pursuant city council rule 7E, agenda item number 19 should be laid over for two weeks. Liquor, item number 20, Omaha Country Club, 6900 Country Club Road, Class C liquor license and application, no location, is an upgrade.
The public hearing on item number 20 begins at this time. Is there anyone here for the applicant?
Chris Estwick with Fraser Stryker, 409 South 17th Street, Suite 500. And I have with me John Davis, who is the manager of the applicant, Omaha Country Club, 6900 Country Club Road. OCC currently holds a Class I liquor license and desires to upgrade to a Class C liquor license. Mr. Davis and I are happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents? Any opponents? Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. This is my district, so I just thought I'd say that this might seem like an unusual request for a country club to do on off sale, but I think it's perfectly irrational in terms of the explanation you gave and the occasional event that you have. I don't foresee any problems in the neighborhood, so I would move to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
20 is approved, six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 21, Nation Smart, 6620 South 36th Street, package liquor license and application, new location, and you have communications supporting.
The public hearing on item number 21 begins at this time. Is there anyone here for the applicant? Please come forward.
Good afternoon. Cameron Hassan of Hush Blackwell LLP, 13330 California Street, Suite 200. On behalf of Stephen Hoath, the owner of Nation Smart LLC, who is present this time, I'd like to offer into the record a collection of community signatures in support of the application.
It'll be made a part of the record.
And we are happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Gurnat.
Thank you, Mr. President. Gentlemen, Stephen, I know that, I think this is the third time at bat to try to find a location that your Nation Smart could be established. And I know our first two, we had some discussions about that, and I think the third time's the Especially appreciative of the fact that you took the time out to visit with some neighbors around that area, and you've also agreed with me in a teleconference call that in your plan of being a good neighbor is keeping the area clean, making sure that you and your staff follow the liquor laws of the state of Nebraska, and that those that are not trained within your staff, that you will get them trained. Is that my clear understanding? And that's what you've agreed to?
Yes.
Okay. Is that a yes?
Yes.
You need to speak using words, not nods of the head or shrugs of the shoulder.
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
Would you give your name, please?
I'm Stephen Hoath.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so just for the record, all the things that I had mentioned on those three agreements you agreed to, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I, I wish you all the best. I, I see that some work has started in that, that building. I believe that used to be an old grocery store back in the day.
That what I heard about 10 years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like what you've done so far down there, so continue being that good neighbor, and I'm, I'm sure you'll be successful at that location. Motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
21 is adopted, six to zero. Item number 22, Maria Bonita's Mexican Cuisine, 5132 L Street, on sale beer license and application, new location. I have communications opposing.
Public hearing on item number 22 begins at this time. Is there anyone here for the applicant? The one and only Maria Bonita.
Very bonita. Amitse Lopez, owner. Even nobody can see me, but I'm right here.
We, we have a microphone a few.
So everybody hears me.
Okay. Is there anything else you'd like to say?
No, we're just happy to know that you guys are going to approve, I hope.
All right. Anyone else in favor of the applicant wishing to be heard? Any opponents? Mr. Gurnat. Public hearing is closed.
Thank you, Mr. President. We've had, I, I know.
I'm like, don't get over.
You can pull that microphone down toward you.
Okay, gotcha.
One technology we do have here.
I see.
How's business so far?
Business is great. Yes, we're happy to be part of that neighborhood.
Okay. And your application here for an on-sale beer license in regards to folks that come in, have dinner, want to have a, a drink with their, with their meal, there's nothing that's going to be going out the door, other than what's already been consumed? Is that, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I know we had one letter of opposition in regards to the application. I believe your facility is located nine blocks east of the temporary school that's going to be established at 60th and L.
That's correct.
Okay. And I, right across the street, I believe, is the student transportation facility where the, the school buses are stored and operated out of, is that correct?
That's correct.
What would you be doing any differently if you were granted this license? What would you be doing any differently in your operation, other than serving? Say in the area of security, the management style, when someone does order those types of things? Just share that with us, if you would.
Right, so obviously training, because currently we don't have anything, so we'll probably get up to speed on the training on, for everyone, not only the people that serving, but people that will be managing both the front of the house and back of the house. So they're all aware of, of, you know, the serving regulations as far as ages and what kind of products we will be serving. Differently, I think, as far as catering, nothing major, just catering and, and targeting family, not really just a bar. It's more of a family restaurant.
That's true, it's fair. I've been in there, and food's great, service is great, and I'm sure that once everybody gets trained and you know what the rules are and what you're supposed to be following, and I, you're, you're the manager, right?
Yes.
And mom's doing fine in the kitchen?
Correct. It's a family-owned business, all of us have a role.
Okay. Well, I'm glad that, family venture, you're certainly vested in the community, have been for a long time, and now with this location, I'd like to give everybody at least one chance to make a motion to approve.
Second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
22 is adopted, six to zero.
Thank you.
Item number 23, Omaha Marriott Hotel, 10220 Regency Circle, request permission to appoint Clayton Crampton manager.
The public hearing on item number 23 begins at this time. Is there any, anyone here for the applicant?
Hi, Clayton Crampton, Omaha Marriott Restaurant Manager.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to say, or just here to answer questions?
Well, I'm here to answer questions, and I did have, on the, on the background check, I failed to put a, I had a littering charge from when I was 19, threw a cigarette butt out the window, and it was 15 years ago. I had forgotten about it, but I had written a letter stating that I was aware of it. Faxed it over to the board yesterday. I hope you all got it. Just in case, I brought a second copy for today. Other than that, that's all I have.
Okay. Any other proponents? Opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will say I have breakfast on a regular basis out there. And he is, he is a true gentleman, so if that's any indication of what he's like, he has my vote.
Okay.
Move the approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
23 is approved, six to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 24, The Ober Bar, 15660 West Center Road, request permission to appoint Jamie Ober manager.
The public hearing on item number 24 begins at this time. Is there anyone here for the applicant?
Hello, my name is Jamie Ober.
Your address.
My address is 10532 R Street.
Here to answer questions?
Yep.
Okay. Any other proponents? Opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Move the approval.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
25 is approved, five, or six to zero. Item number 26, Immaculate Conception Church, request permission to appoint Rebecca Rosales manager.
The public hearing on agenda item number 26 begins at this time. I see the applicant's on her way down. Come on down, identify yourself. Move over to the microphone. Yes.
Hi, I'm Father John Bransich. I'm the pastor of Immaculate Conception Church, 2708 South 24th Street.
Rebecca Rosales, 8807 Q Street.
Thank you. You're here to answer any questions?
Yes.
Okay. Any other proponents? Opponents? Public hearing is closed. Counselors.
Motion approved. Second.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
26 is approved, six to zero.
Thank you very much.
Item number 27, Jocelyn Castle, 3902 Davenport Street, request permission to appoint Sheri Moore manager.
The public hearing on agenda item 27 begins at this time. Proponents, please?
Sheri Moore, 19277 Papleton Avenue. I'm here to answer questions.
Any other proponents? Opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Motion approved. Second.
Roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
26 is approved, six to zero.
Thank you very much.
Item number 27, Jocelyn Castle, 3902 Davenport Street, request permission to appoint Sheri Moore manager.
The public hearing on agenda item 27 begins at this time.
Good afternoon.
Proponents, please?
Sheri Moore, 19277 Papleton Avenue. I'm here to answer questions.
Any other proponents? Opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Motion approved. Second.
Roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
27 is approved, six to zero.
Can we do 28 and 29 at the same time?
Thank you.
Yes, we can. Item 28 is Smash Burgers at 12330 K Plaza, and the Smash Burgers at 29 is 7204 Jones Street, request permission to appoint Robert Jeffries manager.
The public hearing on agenda items 28 and 29 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Robert Jeffries, 12205 Wirth Street.
Any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Just had a quick question.
Oh, yes. Councilmember Thompson.
The young kids today have this phrase, when they're eating, they'll say like, "I'm going to smash this burger." And I was wondering, is that why you took on the name Smash Burger, or is it because of a different reason?
Well, it was started in Denver, Colorado. I took it on just as a manager. It wasn't any decision I made. Smashing is just a process we do for cooking the burger.
It has nothing to do with young people folklore?
Nope.
Okay.
Not that I'm aware of.
Move the, move the approval.
Second.
Roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson. permission to appoint Rudy Newcomb manager.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty begins at this time. Any proponents?
Rudy Rusty.
I'm Kim Fielder. I'm with GPM. I'm the district manager for the store.
And your address?
One nineteen, nineteen Fort Street.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Council member Milton.
Thank you. I just have one question. I noticed here, just last year, there was a charge of selling tobacco to a minor.
Not that I'm aware of.
Am I on the right one?
Yep, you are.
Okay. So it looks like it's Rusty. So who's Rusty?
Rusty.
Are you?
No. Rusty's the manager.
Okay. Could Rusty maybe?
He wasn't the manager at the time.
Okay.
I was the DM of the time, though.
Okay. So just to keep this orderly, council member, would you like to speak to Rusty, the actual proposed manager?
Yes.
Mr. Newcomb? Come on down.
Thank you very much.
Tell us your name and address.
Hello, I'm Rusty Newcomb. I live at one one seven, two four Camden Avenue.
Okay. And Rusty, you're gonna be, they're asking to appoint you as the manager of this Eddie's location, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And have you ever managed an Eddie's or anything before?
No. This will be my first time. Yes, ma'am.
And, you know, I understand when you're young, people make mistakes.
Right.
But because this was just within the, last year, like, six, maybe six months ago, since 2015, you were charged with selling tobacco to a minor. Under what circumstances did that occur?
At that time, I guess, I was just busy doing my work, and I was focused on other stuff, so when he came in, I just forgot, and just, and it's never happened since then. I've really worked hard. Even people that I've seen, I make sure and still card them, and they seem to understand.
Okay. And, you know, and, I mean, that's just a little concerning, but now that you're gonna be managing liquor, it's gonna be even more important that you are making sure you're not selling any liquor to minors, but also that the people that work for you, since you're gonna actually be the manager, you're gonna be responsible even when you're not there.
I understand.
Okay. And you're willing to make sure you train the people that are working when you're not there to make sure that they're not selling not only just tobacco, but also the liquor.
Yes, ma'am, the best I can.
Okay.
With GPM, we have a lot of training now.
Would you, you have to tell us your name and address?
Oh, Kim Fielder.
Thank you.
With GPM, we have a lot of training now on the computer that teaches the employees. They have to go through almost a two-week program on the computer of different, the carding procedures, what to look for, learning the dates, you know, to learn stuff. We have that all posted up front, too, on the registers.
Oh, and it's part of your computer system when they're ringing it in?
Yep. It's part of the system when they get hired. And then it's ongoing. I think it's Newcomb, probably every year, they retrain the ones that have been around and stuff, just to kind of refresh on different things with the carding process.
Okay. All right. Well, with that, I will do a motion to approve.
Okay. Council member Gurnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just curious on this item. When the clerk announced it and said your name, why didn't you come forward?
Because I was told to speak on my behalf of my company, GPM.
Okay. Could I have him answer that?
Right, yeah. I just thought she was able to answer all the questions, so I apologize.
All right. Thank you.
All right. We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
No.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Thirty is approved, five to one. Item thirty-one, Perry's Place, ninety-six, fifty-two Mockingbird Drive, request permission for a special designated license for a concert on July twenty-second, twenty-third, 2016, from twelve noon to twelve midnight, with music ending at twelve midnight.
The public hearing on agenda item number thirty-one begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Chad Perry, eighty-five, thirty-six, South one hundred and fourth Street, here to answer any questions.
Any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. No lights? No further discussion? Roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Thirty-one is approved, six to zero. Item number thirty-two, Big Red has granted approval to operate a satellite keno location at one hundred and fifty-two, forty-four West Maplewood for I Don't Care Bar.
The public hearing on agenda item number thirty-two begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council. My name's Katrina Coffey. I'm vice president of marketing for Big Red Keno. We're located at one one two, forty John Galt Boulevard. I have with me today the owner, the I Don't Care Bar, and we're here to seek approval for the ownership change before you, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Any opponents wishing to be heard? None? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Thirty-two is adopted, six to zero.
Thank you.
Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause an item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed consent agenda shall be taken up by city council meeting following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by city council rules of order.
The public hearings on agenda items number thirty-three through thirty-nine were held on May twenty-four, 2016. Roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Thirty-three through thirty-nine are passed, six to zero. We're moving item number fifty-six from the consent agenda.
We need to take fifty-seven off, too, just for a brief discussion.
Okay. Fifty-six and fifty-seven are off.
The public hearings on agenda items number forty through fifty-five and fifty-six through sixty-two are today.
Fifty-eight through sixty-two.
Or in fifty-eight through sixty-two are today. If you wish to address the council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or opponent. Public hearing is closed.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Forty through fifty-five, fifty-eight through sixty-two are adopted, six to zero. Now, item number fifty-six is resolution to grant agreement to provide funding for the rehab and lead reduction work for the property at thirty-one, ten, South Nineteenth Street is hereby approved, and we have an amendment of the whole.
Okay. The public hearing on agenda item number fifty-six begins at this time. Any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. You have to amend it as a whole?
Amendment of the whole.
Roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Fifty, the amendment of the whole of fifty-six is adopted, or adopted, six to zero. Item number fifty-seven, resolution that the bid from Dostal Construction is to furnish all labor materials and equipment necessary for the construction of playground improvements at Benson Park, at Bemis Park and at Benson Park are hereby approved.
The public hearing on agenda item number fifty-seven begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? And just so the record's clear, we did receive some communications, I would call it concern, on the Bemis Park part of this. We'll get to that in a minute. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I'll let the president speak to the Bemis Park issue he was just referencing, but this is a bid to approve new playground equipment and some work at two very important parks in the city, Bemis Park and Benson Lions Park. So I'll speak to Benson Lions Park, which is in my district at about sixty-sixth and Belondo. So I've worked for about, I would say, fifteen years to get this playground renovated, back to the neighborhood playground renovation project under Mayor Fahy. So I'm pleased we're finally at the final steps to getting this done, which was one of the final ones that weren't done as part of those seventy neighborhood parks, and through a partnership with the neighborhood and the Parks Department and the mayor's office grant program. So it's about a hundred and ninety thousand dollar renovation of that park that'll occur this summer, moving the playground back from the street, which is a pretty busy street, making it safer, replacing the entire playground structure, which is very important, I think, to neighborhoods and to childhood development, and as well as safety. There's also a ballpark there that'll be renovated, and a new pathway that'll be constructed. So it's a very exciting time and a great addition to that neighborhood. So I would urge we move this forward today, notwithstanding some last-minute concerns from the Bemis Park that Councilman Jaren will explain here in a minute, and I want to thank the Parks Department for getting it done this year.
Thank you. Yeah, and I would just point out, Council member Festerson, when we served on the Parks Committee together and Benson Park was going on, you often wondered if and when you'd ever get this one across the finish line. So congratulations to you and the Parks Department and the administration for doing that on the Benson Lions Park. Mr. Bench, Parks Director, I see he's there, and I have a question. The concerns we received from the Bemis Park residents today, although they all came in after noon, we've been able to work rapidly in order to address this, I think. Their concerns go to the actual pavilion or structure that is proposed to be replaced under this contract, and the neighbors would request, at least the ones that contacted us, opposition to another building because of the undesirable activities that have been going on with the existing structure. So we've reached back out to them as a result of conversations with you, and it's my understanding you will agree administratively to meet with the Bemis Park neighborhood. Is that correct?
Brookbend, Parks and Recreation Director. Yes, I can do that.
And that'll be done before the notice to proceed on terms of the construction of the Bemis Park portion of this?
That is correct.
And if the neighborhood as a group collectively decides that they do not wish to have the replacement structure constructed, you will work with them to remove that part of that, of the contract as a change order?
Yes, we can do that. We have also, I talked to Dennis Briers, who's the park planner on that project. There is some more need for some rubber surfacing in one of the newer playgrounds that'll be installed, so we could transfer some of those funds, and we would just do additional playground surfacing instead of the shelter.
All right. And I want to thank you for that, and it appears that I'm comfortable we can handle all this administratively and address the concerns of the neighborhood. So if there is a motion to approve, it would be both and subject to what Mr. Bench just said. Roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Fifty-seven is adopted, six to zero. Ordinance on final reading, item number sixty-three, ordinance to amend chapter twenty-four, article two of the Omaha Civil Code to add and revise the definition to clarify the duties of the Landmark Heritage Preservation Commission regarding the National Register of Historic Places or Local Landmarks to authorize additional duties of approval for the national registration of historic buildings to authorize additional review of properties for potential historic significance prior to demolition, A and B are communications and support.
The public hearing on this item was held May twenty-four, 2016. Since then, I've had some outreach from the development community that would like to have a meeting and discuss some suggestions they have. I'm comfortable with that, and the city attorney who's working on this particular item with me is on vacation this week, so if there could be a motion to lay the vote on this over to July twelve, I will have a meeting with that community. And I see Mr. Pauls, you still wish to speak?
Yes, Mr. Paul.
Okay. Council member?
I'm trying to hit my button, and it's not, baby.
I think he was.
I just have a procedural question, because if we're gonna be discussing this, I think part of what the calls that I got were that, it just came up on the agenda, they didn't really have a lot of notice, and so they would like to have more public, or more discussion and public discussion. Would there be any way that we could continue this and reopen the public hearing?
Well, it's always prerogative of a council member, if there's, they wish to call someone up to discuss their position on an item, that's certainly that each member has that prerogative. The public hearing was closed, so parliamentarian-wise, Mr. Clerk.
If you so desire, you could have a motion to reopen my hearing.
You probably could accomplish what you wish by simply just calling someone down if they wish to speak.
And I guess what I think a lot of people in the development community are hoping for is that there can be maybe some amendments and some tweaks, or depending on who you talk to. At that point in time, if we're gonna have amendments, what I would like to do, and I don't know if you do it today, or wait until then, but I'd like to reopen it so that people could then have the opportunity to discuss those amendments.
And just so you know, my thinking on it, there'll be a meeting. I mean, there's a couple developers who are philosophically opposed to this, and that's their right, and if they persuade four of you to join in their opposition to vote this down, that's fine. There are others that have suggestions that they'd like to see in terms of amendments. Some of their ideas are actually pretty interesting, and that'll be ferreted out in the meeting. My thought is, once we have those amendment ideas, we'll route this back to the planning committee for your comments, and then the other side of the issue, the preservation community, and then we'll bring it back, hopefully by July twelve, if we can get that all done, and there'll be a vote on that day, either on the amendments or to, as amended, or just whether it goes up or down. That's what will happen at that day.
All right. Thank you.
And then if anyone else wishes to speak further from either side, we can call them down and talk. Does that sound?
That sounds reasonable, as long as we give people, I think, another opportunity to discuss it. That's all that I ask.
You bet. Council member Gurnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm the one that made the motion, and there was a second, but it just seems strange to me that the development community, or a few of the development community, say that they need more time to study this. I beg to differ. These guys are constantly contacting us months in advance about developments, so for them not to know that this was coming up, I find that a little bit hard to swallow, but...
Well, they're...
No, I get what you're saying, and I support that, but I just wanted the record to be clear that these guys know what they're doing out there, and they put us on notice on various things. So for them to say that they just got this, basically, I find that hard to believe. I'm gonna support the layover.
Thanks, and I would just add to that, the, there were suggestions made. Our ability to have amendments drafted was severely handicapped by the fact that our, the person who would be drafting that is on vacation from the law department. So in fairness to the developers who made the suggestions, we physically just couldn't produce an amendment for discussion today. That's why a little more prolonged route with the layover till after the Fourth of July, but we'll have everyone back here at that time, and we'll work through it on that day. Next item.
Got to have...
Oh, roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Sixty-three is laid over five weeks to July twelfth. Resolutions, item number sixty-four, resolution that city council supports the development and bidding of a new solid waste collection contract and encourages the Public Works Department to develop new specifications.
Public hearing on this item was held April twelve, 2016. Council member Milton.
I think for those out, as we call it, in TV land, who are wondering why we're placing this on file, I just kind of wanted to go through the history. This resolution, as recommended by the mayor, we all supported. We actually just wanted, it was our discussion back on April twelfth, that we wanted additional detail, which the mayor, Public Works, and all of us agreed to. But we didn't, we determined that we didn't want to wait until today to pass that resolution, so that Public Works wanted some support from the council to make sure that they had our support. So on April twenty-sixth, we ended up passing essentially what was this resolution that had additional detail. So we essentially already passed this resolution, it was just a, it's kind of an amendment of the whole, but we couldn't do it that way because this had already been continued to today. So the reason this is being placed on file is more just procedural. We actually passed this resolution on April twenty-sixth. We actually passed this resolution on April 26th. So I just wanted to make it clear as to why we're placing it on file.
Thank you. Any other lights? Seeing none, roll call.
Milton, Paul, Thompson, Festerson, Grenat. Mr. President.
Yes.
Sixty-four is placed on file. Item number sixty-five, resolution that the professional services agreement with SCS Engineering for Professional Engineering Services associated with the project for sustainable materials management yard waste study, City of Omaha is hereby approved. And A is a document submitted by Greg Moody.
The public hearing on agenda item number sixty-five begins at this time. Are there any proponents wishing to be heard? If you could, seeing that there's a few of you, just work your way down to the front so you're ready to go.
My name is Mike Miller. I'm a vice president with SCS Engineers here in Omaha. My address is 14616 Corby Street. I'm here to answer any questions.
I'm Dr. John Hartwell. I'm a registered engineer in the state of Nebraska and a senior consultant with SCS Engineers, and my residence is at 4314 South 184th Street.
Thank you. Next proponent, please. And if you wouldn't go too far, anticipate questions.
Helen Vavoka, 3719 Hamilton. Live in Van Gray's district. I was having a hard time deciding if I'm a proponent or an opponent here. I didn't like the two choices. It seems like a study is a really good idea because this is a complicated issue. I read the proposal, however, and it looks like this study doesn't cover all the alternatives. It said they would take maybe three, and one of them is the one that's not working very well now, and one of the other ones is the one that we got rid of when we went to the one that we have now. So that only leaves one other alternative. And if we're lucky, that'll be the best possible alternative for the City of Omaha for years to come. What I think we need to do is include in this study something that looks at all the potential alternatives, not just the two that we've already tried and whichever one of the other two they listed, they decide to study. This is a big, important issue. There are a lot of people concerned about this, and there's a possibility that we're doing this out of order. We're picking a yard waste alternative before we do the entire waste situation reexamination. So I guess what I would urge you to do is, yes, do a study, but study more than just the alternatives that we've already tried. Look for new alternatives. We aren't the first city in the country that's faced with this issue. There are multiple options. I don't know what they all are. I'm guessing that you don't know either. So the first thing to do, in my opinion, is figure out what the alternatives are, then pick three of those to study instead of the ones that we've already tried. They probably need less study.
Thank you. Any other proponents? How about opponents wishing to be heard? Come on down.
Good afternoon, Craig Moody. I'm representing Verdis Group. We're located at 1516 Coming. I think Exhibit A, you guys have already received that, so I won't hand this out to you. I'll keep my copies for another day. I just wanted to quickly take the opportunity to address the council, and I'll quickly turn it over to Andy Harpanow, who's going to talk about what I think is, as the previous speaker mentioned, a good alternative going forward. I would tend to agree that considering the two alternatives, if that's really what the proposal is intended to do, is too narrow. I think there are many, many more alternatives, and I think we're going to talk today about one that I think is really specifically in our foresight that is worth considering in a serious way. And I hope that, the main question that we have is really about the current scope of work as written and whether or not these alternatives would be included as part of that analysis or are additional alternatives, things that would be out of scope. I know what it's like to be a consultant and have the scope moving and shifting, and that's frustrating. And typically, you lose money as a result of that. So I'm empathetic to SCS and the extent to which it is sort of a moving target. But I hope that, once we do narrow down and drill down on what the right alternatives are, that those are, that in front of them are really meaningfully and seriously considered. I know that there's been a lot of public discussion about the main two, but I want to be sure that we're considering every alternative. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moody. Next opponent, please. I'm guessing you're Mr. Harpanow.
Andy Harpanow, 16494 292nd Street in Ashland. We own a company called Soil Dynamics Composting Farm. And I guess my idea here is that composting needs to stay alive in Omaha. I've read in the paper that this landfilling yard waste is going to reduce the landfill by 11 years. That's a lot, that's a lot of years still. And I know we have a lot of time left in our landfill, but we need to be thinking, where's that next landfill go? The decision makers today aren't going to be around when that landfill goes away. Well, whose backyard will it be in next? I know for a fact that we, even just getting our own composting farm cited, we had a heck of a time doing that because it's just, and nobody wants to deal with waste in their backyard at all. But if things are operated correctly like we have been, we've been in business for six years, we've been doing a great job of composting everything from zoo manure here from the Henry Dorley Zoo to food waste, yard waste, from our own, we own a company called Gretna Sanitation. We've been diverting our own yard waste for six years and composting that and creating a great product alongside of our mulch products. So composting can be done, it can be profitable, and we think that there's, this is a great opportunity for the city to look at privatizing composting in Omaha. And let's not forget that we're talking about 26,000 yard tons of compost, which equates about 80,000 yards or so of yard waste staying out of the landfill, 40,000 yards of soil amendment that will not be hitting our yards. What's the alternative here for gardens, things of that nature? Everybody has to revert to synthetics if they can't get an organic product. So I guess if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them, but I want you guys to know that there is an alternative, there is. This is a great time to privatize something like this, and I think you could, you could do that very easily.
Did I hear you say you're doing yard waste for the city of Gretna?
We own a company called Gretna Sanitation, so we're operating out of Gretna.
Okay. But you're not, are you a contractor for Gretna, or are you...
Gretna is a, they're not a franchise, they're a subscription city.
Okay. Thank you. Any other opponents wishing to be heard? Mr. Corbin.
Dr. David Corbin, 1002 North 49th Street. I'm also the vice chair of the Missouri Valley Group Sierra Club. We invited Paul Dunn to give a presentation about some of the plans for the city. We listened to those. There are a lot of people who have a lot of questions. By the way, Councilperson Milton, thank you for the explanation, because when I was here two months ago, it was supposed to be delayed till today, and then I read in the paper that it wasn't, so I guess now I understand what happened. But I spoke in April about a comprehensive, and comprehensive to me and to the Sierra Club means that you look at all alternatives. If you don't have an alternative, then you don't have to worry about it. But now it came to my attention that there is an alternative that could very well be possible, and so therefore, we want to make this as broad as possible. I agree with the previous speaker about it would be nice if we could look at all things recyclables, garbage recyclables all at once, but we are, you're passing, voting on whether to pass this or not, I would suggest that you consider this other alternative as you vote today.
Thank you. Now, were you speaking individually for the Sierra Club or both?
Both.
Thank you. Any other opponents wishing to be heard?
Hi, my name is Nathan Jones. I live at 709 Rosewood Avenue in Papillion, Nebraska. And I represent Scare Waste Solutions. We're an environmental consultancy. I'm actually here because I'm friends with these guys, and they were talking about their decision whether or not this was actually a good solution for Omaha. So what we actually do, we work mostly with federal clients, so the DOD, EPA, people like that. We actually have been working a lot lately on similar problems with the New York Port Authority. And it's interesting because what doesn't always work on the East Coast, what works on the East Coast doesn't always work here in the Midwest. And you guys have cheap land, landfills are cheap. So it kind of changes some of the economics of it, which is why I think you're looking at this in the first place. But what is interesting is, long-term, not only do you fill your landfills faster, but you start to run into some problems kind of like Austin and Houston are, where their corporate partners, people who live in their city, pass these pretty broad policies within their companies. And those companies want access to things like diversion rates. So somebody like Google says, we want to divert 90% of all of our, of all of our waste. And that starts to put pressure on the city to actually help them meet those goals. One of the big issues is organics, specific to food waste. So like the school systems love, love, love to compost organics. But the problem with food waste is you need a lot of the yard waste with it. So food waste can only make up about 20%. So you need this yard waste to be able to have the larger composting organics programs that a lot of cities are coming to find that they are being pressured to have down the road. And not being able to meet some of those has actually caused problems in a place like Austin, where some of these small tech companies find companies, or sorry, cities that do have these types of programs to meet some of their, what they consider corporate responsibilities to, to the environment. So I think Andy has the opportunity to continue picking up yard waste, have a centralized local transportation, transfer center, and cheaply and cost-effectively get it out to his farm. And his farm is actually, as far as we're concerned, a little bit of upgrading, and he can handle Omaha's yard waste load, even on the, without even expanding the current property that he's already working on. So we think it's a good alternative. Again, the study's going to tell whether or not it meets the financial and fiscal responsibilities you guys have to the city, but we just thought it would be a good idea to have it included.
Thank you. Any other opponents wishing to be heard?
Hi, my name's Kay Karn. I'm at 14305 Whiter Lane. I'm with Verdis Group. And I just wanted to walk all of you through the proposal a little bit, because no one has done that yet, to make sure that everyone's on the same page and explain some of the benefits from what Soil Dynamics is proposing. So he's proposing having a transfer station that's centrally located. That's different than what's been going on with Omagro, because collection trucks have been individually driving down to Omagro and back, which is quite a distance. So a central transfer station would eliminate a number of collection truck miles. That would be good economically. It would be good for the driver issue that I hear is out there, because there'd be less time for drivers. It'd be better for the environment from an emissions perspective. He's also talking about taking private responsibility for the composting operation. When I look at Omagro's economics on the city books, it doesn't look as if Omagro is a profitable thing for the city to be running. So Soil Dynamics would charge the similar tipping fee presumably to what Omagro is charging, and that would be privatized. And as a fiscal conservative, when it makes sense to privatize something, as long as the city's getting the service that it needs, I think that's a win for a business in our community and a win for the city to take a loss off the city's books. Another environmental benefit would be CNG collection trucks. They have generally lower emissions than the current collection trucks. And I guess I just wanted to encourage any of you to ask any questions. I don't know if you had a chance to read the document that was sent through.
Thank you. There are a number of lights on, so I'm sure there'll be questions.
Okay.
Any other opponents wishing to be heard? If not, we'll close the public hearing and go to the first light, Mr. ...
You want to give the proponents a little rebuttal time?
Oh, proponents, do you want rebuttal time? Okay. I would anticipate there'll be questions for you anyways. Okay, Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. So I'm supportive of the study we're talking about here today, and in fact urged we do a study. When it became apparent that we're looking at options for our solid waste management going forward and wanting to evaluate those options. And it's important to have an efficient and reliable service throughout the city, but it's also important that we take a look at it from an environmental perspective, that we're minimizing volume, increasing recycling, minimizing our carbon footprint, all the things that are important, I think, for a progressive city to be thinking about, and that many cities do well and do much better than we have in recent years. So I'm supportive of this environmental lifecycle approach. I will say, though, I agree with several of the testifiers today that it's not comprehensive in nature yet. So I wanted to ask a few questions about that from either Mr. Miller or Mr. Hartwell, whoever would like to, to speak to it. We did have a chance to meet with you about the scope of the document here, and I don't think you're representing that it is comprehensive either. This is just a first step. So if you would come up and kind of dialogue about that a little bit.
You have to tell us your name.
Thank you. Mike Miller, again, with SCS Engineers. Do you need an address again?
No.
Perfect. Yeah, I think that as we developed and contemplated this scope and fee, and as we did talk with folks within city governance, you know, there is no one-size-fits-all. I think we heard somebody on the opponent's side talk, East Coast doesn't necessarily resonate to the Midwest. What we know is a firm that's been doing solid waste work since 1970. What I know in my 22 years is that there are a lot of alternatives to sustainable materials management. One may be the landfilling of such material. One may be diversion through public outreach, backyard composting, mulching versus bagging and putting it curbside. So we agree, there are a lot of alternatives here to be considered and to be evaluated as part of this study. But you have to start somewhere, as one of the opponents talked about, with the scope and a fee and moving fees. What we want to do is, we want to start that study by really understanding what the city's system is and assessing the assets in the collateral that the city has, requesting that information, and we're going to look back 15 to 20 years of information and understand those volumes. But then, as we clearly identify in Task Two, as part of that current operations, we're going to do a needs assessment. And that needs assessment is understanding private entities like Soil Dynamics, like Scotts over in Pacific Junction, Iowa, and other private entities that are out there that do compost in a commercial setting. And we'll understand those needs. And then we'll come forth to the city and identify those, not just two scenarios, as alluded to, but right now we contemplated four. There might be a fifth or a sixth that really warrants detailed analysis and modeling. And that is what we propose to do as part of this. And so those will be detailed in that Task Three stage. And then I would point you to Task Four of our detailed scope and fee. There is a third alternative. So we have Alternative One, let's do what we're doing today. Let's have absolute 100% separate collections, just as the city currently contracts for. Or let's go ahead and co-mingle and have 100% go to the landfill, as happened last summer when waste was rotting on the curb. Alternative Three is, let's have some co-mingled collection, but let's have some diversion, whether that's through private partnerships, whether that's through pseudo-government entities, whether that's through reduced service compost facilities. That is clearly identified as an alternative three. And then also, Alternative Four would be to continue with separate yard waste collections, but afford some mechanism to limit the volume by which the city has, because right now the city has zero volumes. I'm sure private entities that have a pay-for-service program charge by a cart. And I'm sure if Bob, my neighbor, wants four carts, he pays for the second and third and fourth cart. We'll model that, and we'll help the city understand those alternatives. So I really think that the opponent's position is well-spoken. We take it to heart. We recognize that one-size-doesn't-fit-all, and we're prepared to dig in and really help the city understand those alternatives.
Okay. Thank you. So I want to talk about Task Three and Four a little bit more specifically, and then I want to talk about Task Eleven, too, which you added at our request, which I appreciate. So in your response there, we're going to be evaluating several different scenarios from a comprehensive perspective in terms of their carbon footprint and landfill impacts and delivery impacts and yard waste and methane factors. One thing I think that the testifiers are asking specifically is, will the option they believe is viable, to privatize and have a transfer station and have essentially the Omagro program continue but be privatized itself, also be analyzed with some specifics, the same specificity as the other ones you just described, in, within this scope?
Yeah, I think as we establish our pro forma modeling, there are many facilities, municipalities that have that hub-and-spoke concept, hub being the small trucks coming to a centralized transfer station, consolidation onto walking floor, 55-foot-long trailers that then go to the actual end-use facility. We'll certainly be able to model that and help you understand the costs. I don't think that we, as part of this scope, are going to prepare or assess or evaluate a non-solicited proposal from a private entity to the City of Omaha. So that would not be part of our current contemplated scope and fee.
Right. And I don't think they're proposing that, because that gets to my, to the second part I want to go to, which is Task Eleven. But, but what you are saying is, within this scope, if approved today, you could engage Mr. Harpanow on the general parameters of what he's describing and evaluate that as one of our scenarios.
I would absolutely be talking with him as part of the needs assessment in Task Two to understand that private-public partnership are a possibility, so that when we presented to the city those various alternatives, we were prepared to fully evaluate those. Absolutely.
Good. And do you feel that, so on our Task Four, there's one, two, three, and four scenarios. Does actual number five need to be added? Or you can, are those four areas covered, which you analyze with them as well?
I believe it would be covered as we talk about private-owned, privately-operated facilities under Item Three.
Okay. So then when we get the results of the study, it'll, it'll evaluate the current system, the co-mingle collection, co-mingle collection with reduction, separate yard waste collection, and then also the privatized option spoken collect?
Yep, that would be as part of the pro forma modeling, yes.
Great.
One of the alternatives.
I think that's important for this first step. And I, by the way, I'm a strong supporter of composting. I think it is an environmentally important practice, and that most cities can seem to be able to handle and seem to be able to do it in a sustainable fashion. So I was opposed to the recent decision to end it, not only because of that, of those considerations, but I think it's required under our current contract and should be enforced in that respect. But I know we're talking about that decision already being made, and we're moving forward with this analysis as it might inform our next series of bid specifications and future service, which at this point is probably 2020 and beyond, right?
My understanding is your current contract expires in 2020. So certainly, the results of this might help the city make some decisions along the way as you prepare to go out for a new solicitation for waste collection.
And we've, we've talked about this a lot, but you would confirm that the results of this study will inform a bid specification, not the other way around, right?
Correct.
And to Task Eleven, then, you added that specific task to this scope of work along those lines to, to ensure that, once this initial study comes back with these results, should give us an idea of how these various systems could work and what the pros and cons are. And there'd be much more public input then associated with those pros and cons and explaining the study. But a whole other roadmap and several more steps to be determined as to how a bid specification would be formed, how that would be explained to the public, and eventually presumably sent to bid by the Public Works Department prior to any contract ever coming back for City Council approval, right?
That's my understanding.
Okay. I think that's important to observe as well. This is just the first step, but an important first step, I think, in measuring our environmental lifecycle analysis and that footprint that it leaves. Mr. Harpanow, if you would, would come up, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Here, Neil, I'll get him for the record.
Andy Harpanow.
So is what you heard from our dialogue, does that give you some comfort in terms of analyzing the model you're talking about, having that included within the study for everyone's analysis?
Yes, sir. I think it, yeah, I think that there, as long as they're on board, and it seems like they understand what we're, what we're trying to accomplish here, and we get a fair study out of it, yeah, I think it's a, I think we've kind of hit the bullseye there.
Great. Okay. Thank you. Our record's left over for now. I'm sure there's other lights on also.
There are. Dr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just in general, I'd like to go on record saying that I support those who feel that we need to have the widest possible scope as it relates to potential compromises. I, too, would like to turn over every rock and look at everything possible and not just a couple of things that have been discussed so far. So I'm in agreement with that. I'm also in agreement that we need to really do a good job of looking at comparatives with regards to other cities, what works and what doesn't work, and particularly other cities where they've tried some things and then it's backfired because of not... cities where they've tried some things and then it's backfired because of not having enough food waste versus yard waste mixture and things like that. So we really need to take a good look at the successes and failures and model what we're going to do after a good round of research. The issue of whether or not we fill landfills quicker as a result of taking everything to the landfill, that's probably a subject matter that has not been broached far in-depth enough. And then not only that, if you're going to fill the site up sooner, the issue of getting a new future site, the availability of land and things like that, so that has to be part of our conversation. One of the elephants in the room that no one wants to talk about, however, is cost. Now, currently, what we have in Omaha today, if you compare what we pay for now compared to cities and even cities that's just surrounding us in the Midwest, we're actually getting our services for a much cheaper price. And so if we were to go out and do some things that other cities are doing, we would be paying quite a bit more, and for some reason, that issue has been left out of this conversation. It needs to be part of the discourse. The fact that Omaha is the only city in Nebraska that picks up yard waste for free, and I put "free" in quotation marks, folks, we can't avoid having that conversation. We have to have that conversation, and so magical thinking is not going to be a part of the solution. So I once had a caller, and he said to me, "You already collect enough taxes, pay it with the current taxes that you have." And that kind of talk is a little discouraging, because I happen to know that this administration is really doing a bare-bones cost analysis of what they pay for and cost benefit. So there are no hidden buckets of money around anywhere, and the very fact that we have picked up yard waste this long for quote-unquote "free," I'm surprised we've been doing it this long. There was movement during prior times, actually, it started prior to the time that I came on board, which is 15 years ago, that we didn't charge for yard waste because it would be too onerous for people who are on fixed incomes and people who are in poorer parts of the town. It was decided at the state level that we would quote-unquote "pick it all up for free." The problem with that is that it's sort of a diminishing returns thing, because some people, that means, you know, 20, 30 bags. Now, I don't do that now, but in the earlier days, I tried to pawn off that many bags. Then I started feeling guilty about it, so I hire privately to have them come and then take it away. I don't do that anymore. But at some point in time, this conversation has to not only include alternatives and land usage and composting, but it also has to include how we're going to pay for it. And magically closing our eyes and hoping that it'll just go away, that's not going to happen. So I don't know whether that involves re-education of the public or what, but that is a part of the solution and a part of the conversation that we have to have if we're going to do it right. But in general, I do promote having a comprehensive approach, and then not just talking about a few things, but let's look at the whole issue, and then making sure that we learn from what's been done before us, the pros and the cons, what works and what doesn't work. So those are just comments that I'd like to share for the record and also share with the administration. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do appreciate the conversations that we have had today. Councilman Festerson has brought up some intriguing questions, and I think there are some answers out there, and I agree with also with Councilman Thompson, but I'd also say we have a contract right now. We have a contract right now, and to me, it seems like it's a pretty decent contract if we'd hold everybody accountable. I know that does end in 2020, and I understand we do need to be taking a look at this, but we do have a contract. If we'd hold everybody accountable, maybe some of these things that some people say is free, maybe that would clear that up a little bit. I would like to have Andy Harpenow, would you come up? I just have a couple of questions, because after reading your proposal, your presentation, how many?
Yeah, just state your name. Andy Harpenow.
Thank you, Andy. How many drivers do you have right now?
We have five drivers.
Okay. Do you have problems getting drivers?
The best way to get garbage truck drivers is to pay them. It's one of the monotonous, more monotonous jobs out there compared to other Class B operators, but we pay our guys well. They show up for work, pass their drug tests, they do everything they need to do to get out there and get the, they work on the trucks when needed. We're a small, family-owned company. So no, we don't have a lot of problem, but we also pay those guys pretty well.
Okay, let me ask this. So let's say that you were given the opportunity to take over that section of the cities, could you find drivers?
I think we could, yeah, yeah.
The part that I find interesting is currently, they say they are having a hard time finding drivers.
Well, there's several opinions on that, but like I say, it's all amounts, it all amounts to pay. You know, there's a certain stigma that comes with driving a garbage truck, you know? So to get past that, to work the hours that need to be done, we pay those guys really well, benefits, all that sort of thing, so.
So you truly believe if you had that portion of the city that you're dealing with, you could find truck drivers, or drivers, I should say, drivers to fill those slots?
I think so, yes, yeah.
And currently, we can't.
Waste management can't, yeah, yeah.
Okay, no, I'm just trying to, we need to be as honest as we can to make sure that we can find a solution to the issue, because that's what I've heard in the past, we cannot find truck drivers, so that's the reason why we have to combine stuff, because we can't find it. But you're saying that if you had this part of the contract, you truly believe that you can fulfill that?
Yes, yeah.
Are you from this area? Were you born there?
Gretna, yeah, graduated from Gretna.
So you're one of those what I call, what I call, hard-working, small-town people?
Farm kid, yeah, I guess, yeah.
And that's why, that's a part that I like, because that's the area that I came from. You know, you just did it, instead of always coming up with questions, and there are solutions out there. So, and the one reason I'm saying, I'm trying to really promote you right now, I don't know if you'd qualify or not, but I'm trying to get out to those people who are going to be looking at this, that we do have individuals who might be able to handle it, or a large company says they can't. They take a look at a contract, they buy a contract out, and they can't do it. I find that amazing, that you're in the business world with all kinds of individuals who are checking out a company, and you'll buy it, and you say you can't fulfill it. That's the part that I find a little bit irritating. But it's, I'm just saying, one more time, you truly believe that if this were, with your proposal, you would not have any trouble, because?
They're out there, yep, they're out there.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember Melton.
Mr. Miller, if you could.
Yes, Mike Miller.
And I just want to clarify something, because what I heard from opponents was they wanted broader alternatives, and I think you answered it, but I just want to be clear, where it looked like you were just looking at three alternatives, your third alternative is actually looking at multiple alternatives. I just wanted to kind of clarify that, for those that it was unclear, it looked like we were just limiting ourselves kind of in three different boxes.
Yeah, I wish I had a crystal ball that could tell you exactly how many alternatives we're ultimately going to evaluate, but I don't have that crystal ball. I do have experience from a lot of other sister-like communities and understand what has and hasn't worked, and as we dive into the scope of this project and understand the City of Omaha specifics, I think some clarity will come forth on what those alternatives will be, but right now we see four, and three absolutely has multiple scenarios.
Potentially unlimited amount of?
It could be a Douglas County-City of Omaha co-located facility near Pheasant Point landfill. It could be a continuation of Omagro facility 100%. It could be that we franchise Omagro, and you take that to a private entity to operate. I don't know what those are, they're on the table, we're going to identify what those potential alternatives are, we're going to work with the city stakeholders and outside entities, and we're going to evaluate those and provide you objective data so that decisions can be made.
Thank you, thank you very much. I just wanted that, because I think that may clarify it for some of the opponents.
It's important that it be clear, we're passionate about our waste.
Well, and we did have the benefit of sitting down and meeting with you for quite some time and going through everything that we wanted and all the alternatives, so I just want that to be clear.
Thank you.
Everybody here knows you're looking at kind of all the different possibilities.
Yeah, I don't believe that the outcome of this study has been predetermined at all.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. And then, and that's all I have for you, I just kind of wanted to reiterate what we're talking about today, that this study, it appears that we're just looking at yard waste. Well, that's what this study is. The resolution that we put on file and passed back on April 26th, we actually stated that we want, that our resolution that we passed was undertake a comprehensive evaluation of the city's solid waste, yard waste, and recyclable collection service for the purpose of determining optimum service. So part of that first was doing a study comparing the environmental impacts of composting yard waste, disposing of yard waste, and this study that we're doing now. So that was just one piece. That doesn't mean we're not looking at our other solid waste disposal and recyclable, we're just starting with this study and the studies on our agenda. What this council and the mayor would also like to do is then hire a consultant knowledgeable of best practices in comparable-sized cities, which I think from this study may give us kind of some of the alternatives. Then we're going to look at, once we've got some of what are our alternatives for yard waste, what can we do then in combination with solid waste and recyclables for purposes of doing an RFP? What will that look like? And again, even if we decide that it, that maybe privatizing composting under our city charter, I just want you to know, we have to do an RFP. This council can't just find a private company that we like and thinks is doing a great business and just say, "Okay, you're it." So that's something that would, that's what we're trying to do now, is do an RFP, or at least come up with what the bid would look like. What does the City of Omaha and the citizens of the City of Omaha want? So we're starting with the study, we're going to do a review of what all the alternatives might be for the three, and then, the most important piece, in my opinion, is, once we have all that information, we want to take that out to the public. We need to do town halls, we need to go out to the neighborhoods, we need to find out what the citizens of Omaha want to see, and also what they're willing to pay for. Because I know it sounds great, and I firmly believe that you would be able to, as Mr. Harpenow, that you would be able to get the drivers, but again, you said because you pay them well. So, and I appreciate that, but at what cost will each of these alternatives cost the taxpayers? So we need to, we need to make sure that we're keeping that in mind, that we're getting the most efficient garbage collection for the dollar, and unfortunately, sometimes you have to spend more to get what we're talking about now. So what is the willingness of the taxpayers to do that? So those are all things that I think we need to keep in mind. This is a complex issue, this isn't something that we're going to have decided at the end of the summer. But what I appreciate is, our actual contract is not up until 2020, we're starting this process now. I'm hoping that it's, we're not waiting till 2020 to get it all done, but we are starting it early and taking into consideration all the alternatives, listening to the people, listening to other people who have ideas. Mr. Moody, I appreciate what you put together here, because I do think looking at every potential alternative is important. But again, once we have those alternatives, then we have to look at the cost, and how, where's the benefit, and what are we willing to pay? So I guess that's kind of what I wanted to leave you with, and I am hoping, I mean, at least at this point, I think we need to, we need to do the study, because turning the study down now, we're just going to continue to spin our wheels and we will make no progress whatsoever. So I hope with the conversation we've had today, at least the people that are here in opposition are somewhat satisfied and support, and support what we're doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Just one last comment and observation that I forgot to mention. So the Public Works Committee, the council has toured the landfill recently, and we are about to tour the composting facility, so we are doing our due diligence as well. And one thing I wanted to mention that hasn't really been discussed too much, at least not in public so far, is the status of our compost facility, which plays into this study, and how that might look in the future. So it's entirely possible that our current site for composting will no longer be able to be where it is, near our treatment plant, near Plattsmouth, anticipated a potential expansion of that plant due to our treatment, what our treatment plant requirements as a city. So if that plant has to expand, it's entirely possible our compost site will have to move, and that's why this conversation is so important, probably not until after 2020, but, you know, if it wasn't in Plattsmouth but closer to Omaha, that's a lot less trips and a lot less gas and all those things that factor into a city like this. If it's a spoken hub or transfer station that was mentioned today, that has its own impact, positive and negative. If it's a new site that has been talked about up near the current landfill, that's a lot fewer trips, too, because all the trucks aren't going all the different directions, and that's, those are all factors we want to have evaluated in this, in this study, and I think will be evaluated in this study. But I would also say that these are long-term impacts we're looking at. Our current contract was, I think originally 10 years, it became 15 or 20, and an environmental lifecycle study is at least that long, probably longer, for all of these things, including the impacts of methane. So even if there is a capital cost associated with moving or relocating a compost site, I don't think that should be a barrier to how we're looking at a 10, 20, 30, or 40-year perspective here and how we approach our bid specifications, so I just wanted to point that out in this context as well. And I'll motion to approve the study.
Councilmember Pauls.
Thank you. All these conversations stimulate my thinking. One of the questions had that it would be at a cost to the taxpayer, it was implied because they pay the people who are the drivers for this particular company better wages, that would automatically somehow increase the cost to the taxpayer. Well, as I read the proposal, and I know this is just a proposal, the only thing that they would assess us would be the tipping fee, and we already pay a tipping fee. It would be a non-cost transfer from the city, so there are lots of things involved here, so just because, and like I say, even though I like what you said, doesn't mean that just because I like what you said, that you automatically get the job. Let's get real here, people, we know we have to put these out for bids. And another thing, too, that I picked up on the conversation is, we know a lot of these things because in committee, well, I'm going to look at you, and I'm going to talk to you out there in TV land, and this is, I'm giving another one of my song and dances here, if you had access, if that individual over there had access to some of our committee meetings when we're discussing some of these things, you would have a better idea. But right now, you don't, because our meetings are closed, because any time we have three, it can be closed. We have four or more, it has to be an open meeting. I think the more you would hear us, these discussions now, instead of in front of what we're doing today, I would be out here making these statements. I'm trying to get a point across that some of this information, and sometimes it could be only three people on that committee would really know, and then it filters out through us by somebody sending us notes. So I'm just trying to say, the information that's here, not all of us always have access to it until a little later on. Thank you.
I second the motion. Okay, I have a few questions and also some comments. First, if Mr. Miller, you could come back up.
Mike Miller.
At one of those meetings of three, you were present with the Public Works Committee, Ms. Cudahy, and I think Dr. Hartwell was there, too.
Correct.
And the purpose of the meeting was to answer questions that we might have and make us familiar with who you were, and what I heard, at least a part of the meeting that I participated in, were the sentiments of the council members. that I participated in, were, were the sentiments of the council members for the absolute confidence that we needed to have in you in terms of your independence in this process from outside influences, whether they be us, the mayor, Waste Management, or others in terms of truly having the professional independence that, that would give us the confidence in your work product. And I believe that you underscored at that meeting, but I wanted to make it here public, outside of that meeting of three, that just what you had told us. So, you have to say your name again?
I, I did. Mike Miller.
Okay.
And I would affirm that, yes, you absolutely, I don't believe you called it a cross-examination, but I do believe you asked the very question. And I made it very clear as a, you know, citizen of Omaha, as a resident of Omaha, that recently transitioned from private to the city franchisee, that I indeed am the one that reached out to the city and said, I can't help but notice the issue you're dealing with. I've seen it on Channel 6, Channel 7. I believe that myself, professionally 22 years of experience and SCS engineers with the history back to 1970, has the skill set to provide a independent, objective, professional consulting viewpoint. And that was my affirmation at that point, and so I just repeated that for you.
Thank you for clarifying that for the public record. This is no implication by what I'm about to say that there's a concern in that regard by me, but constituents, you know, they go on the internet and then they sometimes contact us. So one of the questions I was asked is, do, does your firm do consulting work for Waste Management? I'm making assumption that I would think, given the size of your firm from coast to coast, that you probably do.
That would be accurate. Yeah. As Engineering News Records, number one or number two solid waste firm across the United States, we work for Waste Management, Republic Waste, Waste Connections, Waste Corp. of America. We work for very large and very small privately-held waste collection and disposal companies.
And notwithstanding that, that business relationship with the city's vendor, you're assuring the public and us here of the independence of your work?
I've not been asked, first off, to even look at the city's contract with your vendor. So this is completely independent of that contract. But if we were asked to assist in a formal RFP down the road or assessing that, that's a service we provide to many municipalities on a routine basis and provide that objectively.
Thank you. Another part of the process, so that the public can have confidence in the process itself, and us in our ability to be their watchdogs in terms of not only the process, but the dollars that, their dollars that we spend or authorized to be spent, is transparency. And so what some are wondering is, is what will the work product be that we get once we receive your report in terms of the analytics side of your work product?
Sure. So the work product will be, again, the agreed-upon alternatives. Let's call them four or five. We will have financial pro forma modeling of that, and then we will have the environmental aspect modeling of that using multiple EPA-derived models. And we'll provide kind of a compare and contrast of those alternatives. Here's pros, here's cons, here's the facts, folks. Now you can talk about your personal beliefs. You can talk about whether the city wants to incur some additional costs to maybe go above and beyond, but that'll be very objective. So it'll be a written summary report with lots of tables, lots of analysis, lots of spreadsheet calculations, lots of bar graphs and charts and projections.
So as I would anticipate, as I explained it, but I want to confirm with you, there, there will be sort of a booklet that'll have an executive summary.
Absolutely.
Contents, and then there'll be the, the analysis and data portion that, that we'll have. In, in the past, there's been studies that we've authorized or past councils have authorized where they put them on our website and as a link, and people can then access the public record to look at them for their, themselves.
Yeah. I, I can't speak for what Public Works intends to do, but the end-use master plan that we recently finished for a landfill in City of Lincoln is available on their website. I would envision that this would be a planning document that would be of interest to your constituents.
You wouldn't be intending to claim any copyright or?
Absolutely not.
Okay. So you don't object to the city if we choose to have it put on our website, the whole study, this, this, the analysis?
The output and the analysis of that, absolutely. If there are proprietary software packages in the background or modeling, that would not be available in its root form, but certainly the output would.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I did have another question, but I'm not going to ask it. I was just wondering if you personally compost or, or have yard waste?
Well, you can ask that. No, you can ask that. In fact, I'll tell you that not only do I compost with the recycled, compost bin in my backyard, but I got it off my neighbor's curb who was going to throw it away.
Excellent. All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Miller. Mr. Harpenoff, can you come down, please?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Andy Harpenow.
Mr. Harpenow, one of the, the impressions I got from what you said in the letter we received in advance is that you've actually undertaken a pro forma, so to speak, in analyzing the city's current yard waste collection portion of its Waste Management contract, and actually run numbers on basically the fleet, the personnel, the collection model, a transfer station, and then, as Mr. Festerson called it, I think, hub and spoke. Have you actually run your own numbers?
I have a little bit, yeah. Yeah. I mean, they're loose a little bit, but yeah.
Okay. So you're familiar with the, the price that, that Waste Management gets paid in terms of per household collection for yard waste?
Correct.
Less than $3.50 per household?
Yeah.
And the tonnage that, fee that Omagro charges that the city collects on that end of it?
Yep.
And, as I heard you answer Mr. Councilmember Paul's questions, you believe, I think there's 22 trucks that do the collection now for the city?
Mm-hmm. I think so, yeah.
And that's the kind of modeling you're doing?
Yeah. And, and a lot of what I look at is tying everything together.
And I'm not saying that, you know, you should just go out and do it. I, I did pose publicly this morning at the pre-council meeting, a query, a comment, that one wonders why if we have a vendor that, you know, can do this, that Waste Management isn't talking to you about, you know, trying to perform on that part of the contract beginning of 17. I'm not asking you for an answer to that, by the way. But, but one of the reasons may be is that we're now, the mayor's authorized them not to separately collect, but to co-collect and to still get paid and receive that $3 in some sense per household on the collection side, even though they're co-collecting, to avoid paying the fee to Omagro on the tipping side for the tonnage, and take it all to the landfill where they're taking a portion of the proceeds on that end, and, and that they manage. And, and, and I don't mean this as a criticism of Waste Management. They're, the people who are running that operation that we deal with are nice people. They're, I mean, they have shareholders to answer to, and that's what drives them. But I, I just want to make that, as a part of the record, my discomfort and, in opposition to the practice that, that the city's adopted in that regard. Because to me, what I hear from my constituents is that they, in the eastern part of the city that I represent, where they can't in many cases afford to pay for a private yard lawn service that then collects them, or the, in some cases, what's been proposed, this separate fee if you have more than one bin for a collection. And I heard in overwhelming numbers from people who said that they would oppose and want me to oppose any movement to that sort of system. Doesn't mean the conversation shouldn't happen, as we've heard here today. But to me, that one of the most critical parts of this is the public engagement, as Councilmember Milton said, is to let this process, once we have the data and we look at the analysis in there, help guide us and our, our constituents, the taxpayers, in letting us hear what it is the community consensus is with regard to how we move forward. And I look forward to that process, and I'm comfortable here today from what I heard from Mr. Miller, that information from companies like yours who offer a privatized model will be included in that.
Then there's not many of us. You know, there's only a few composters in the state, you know. So it's a slow-moving, but a niche market, no doubt.
Thank you.
See that?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We have no further lights. Roll call.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Garnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
65 is adopted, six to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, the public hearing on agenda items 57, or 67 through 82 shall be held on the third reading?
I think we have 66.
Oops, I'm sorry. I skipped 66. We don't need to talk about that one. Resolution Law Department is authorized to make an offer to allow judgment to be taken against the city in a case pending in the District Court of Douglas County, Nebraska, entitled Anthony Merksec versus the City of Omaha.
The public hearing on item number 66 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have one question. Could I, Mr. Kratsch from the Law Department?
Paul Kratsch, City Attorney.
I was reading in the World Herald about this particular case, and I just need some clarification. When I was reading the article, it said that the individual who we're having a lawsuit with is, during this particular accident, he did not have a driver's license. He was not insured, and his car was not plated correctly. Am I, was that correct?
After the, at the time of the accident, he was charged with, you're right, incorrect plates, not having insurance, not having a license. And subsequently, he went to court and was sentenced to eight days jail time for those items.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Milton?
Mr. Kratsch, in your experience in these, would that information go to the jury?
No.
So the jury wouldn't know any of that information when they got the case?
Uh, not on a, in a civil trial, you cannot use criminal issues in front of a civil jury.
So I, and I, and I understand people are upset at hearing that he was an unlicensed, unregistered car. And so it seems to me that that's what is upsetting people about this. However, when you're making a decision, you have to, you have to make your decision based upon your knowledge of the law and your knowledge of what would be actually presented at trial and what would go to the jury.
That's, that's correct. We look at what the facts are, what we can get into the court, and, and weigh that against any negatives, and then make a decision whether or not we should settle or go to trial.
And at this point, the, the, the fact of this was an Omaha police officer was responding and was, I guess, in, in chase, if that's the correct word?
Uh, he wasn't in pursuit. He was heading to a call at some location and went through a intersection, a lighted intersection. He had his sirens on the other. The driver who got hit had the green light. And so, yeah, there was a fact question at that point as to where the liability might lay. And I'm not going to go any further than that.
No, no, I, and I'm not, I'm not going to ask that you go any further, but our officer was, was on his way to a call.
Yes, that's correct.
And so, and then we had medical damages that exceeded $73,000.
Medical damages were a little over $73,000. Lost wages were about $105,000.
And, and so I know that, that this settlement amount of $157,000, I know some of the criticism was that this, this person is going to make over six figures from being in a car without a license and having violated the law. However, is it, you're understanding too, that that, all of that money, that in the majority of these cases, and I don't know if, if you know this, but in my experience, personal experience with these cases, the medicals and all of that, there's subrogation. So out of this settlement amount, the medicals will have to be paid and those kinds of things. I understand that that's between the defendant and his attorney and those providers, but it's very typical in most cases that there's subrogation liens put on, on this amount.
That's correct.
And so I guess when I'm looking at the medicals here of $73,000, a good portion of that settlement's going to pay back those, most likely will pay back those medicals.
Most likely. You're correct.
And so it's your opinion, I assume that putting this on here, that it's in the taxpayer's best interest to have this, to accept this settlement proposal, because it could be, the taxpayers could incur something worse.
Uh, that is correct. We weigh the likelihood of success versus the amount of the settlement and make a decision if we should go forward or, or to engage in the settlement. In this case, we thought it best to take the settlement amount.
And as Mr. Durham can, or Councilman Durham could probably back me up on this one, people always like to speculate on what they think this case would be. But in all honesty, nobody ever knows what kind of jurors you're going to get and how that case is going to go, the individual. Jurors make a big difference, and you don't know who those are when you're talking about settlement. So I guess with that, I understand that people have a serious objection to offering a settlement to somebody that served eight days in jail for violating the law and not having a license. However, the jurors will never know that. So I just wanted to make that clear. And why, in my understanding of why I'm supporting this settlement, because I believe it's in the best interest of the taxpayers. I support our law department and the work they've done. And I guess in my experience, I think this, this is an offer that the city should accept on behalf of, of the taxpayers, because I certainly wouldn't want to pay this plaintiff anymore. So with that, I would do a motion to approve.
Councilmember Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. I support the idea. It's, I enjoy having attorneys talk to each other. I just had a question to see whether the World Herald had reported it correctly. You're making this more into a case. I just, I was surprised it was in the paper. I, I understand when the city doesn't want to, in, you know, cause more hardship for the taxpayer. I totally agree with that. Thank you.
Your lights on. Councilmember Milton, did you wish to speak again?
No.
Okay. All right.
I'm having buttons.
Dr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't like this case. It, it doesn't, doesn't do fit well with me. I'm ready to go vote no on it. But at the same time, I know that this is one that we would probably lose in court because of the way laws are written. And based on the fact that I think we could end up paying more and lose the case, I will hold my no's and vote yes on this one.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. No further lights. Roll call.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yeah.
Festerson?
Yes.
Garnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
66 is adopted, six to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, the public hearing on agenda items 67 through 82 shall be held on the third reading. Ordinance on second reading, item 83, ordinance to approve an update to the Omaha Suburban Park Master Plan for the City of Omaha. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
The public hearing on agenda item number 83 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Pat Slaven, Omaha Parks and Recreation. I'm just here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Opponents? Public hearing is closed.
84, ordinance to designate the Johnson Building located at 1146 South 32nd Street as a landmark pursuant to Landmark Heritage Preservation Ordinance. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. The owner of this property could not make it today. So if you have any questions, you might want to continue the public hearing to third reading.
The public hearing on agenda item number 84 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? What's the will of the body? Okay. Is that a motion?
Yes.
And was that a second?
Yes.
Okay. No further lights?